It is six oh six and I call this meeting to order. Certification of form. Councilman Brian Rowland.
Oh, my bad.
Councilman Rowland.
Present.
Councilman Randall.
Here.
Mayor Allen. Councilman Jones.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilman Wallace.
Here.
May we all stand? Let's see your attention. Can you give us a prayer?
Yeah, or that.
Uh, for wherever you're comfortable.
Can we bow our heads? Father, we're so grateful this evening to be in your presence.
Yes, Lord.
Before we ask for anything, we thank you for all things.
Yes, Lord.
Thank you for things like life.
Yes, Lord.
Food, shelter.
Yes, Lord.
And even forgiveness of sins.
Yes, Lord.
We pray tonight, God, that during this session that you bless us, that wisdom will provide and prevail, and that your people will be blessed because we're leading them in the right direction. This is our prayer. Bless city council and mayor.
Yes, Lord.
In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Father, brother, pledge. For me, please continue to stand.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizen incumbents. Not to be the brown.
Uh, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My esteemed council members and my beautiful neighbors and friends in Prairie View. It's Mike. Well, I guess I'll speak loudly enough so you can hear me. I have two important issues that I wanted to address quickly with you. Uh, first is, uh, has to do with item six and twelve on the, uh, agenda. And my, my recommendation to council is, before you make a decision on that, I want you to review the qualifications as well as the contract that the city already has if you are there at us. It is, um, an enormous company, a global company with over seventy-four thousand workers worldwide. They gross over five billion dollars a year. They're in the business of doing inspections and the kind of things that we need for a building official or a development official, they already do. And it's probably part of our contract that we're already paying for. So before you make a decision on adding to that, uh, it'd be a good idea if you, uh, get with the attorney and find out what our contract includes that we're paying for already. Second of all, I'm going to call your attention to the fact that I think that, once again, we need to look into ourselves. I want to thank, uh, Councilman Jones for looking to a problem with the bicycle lane for me. But I think we need to look again into our consciousness because this problem is coming up again. I dealt with you about women. I dealt with you about Hispanics. Now I'm going to deal with you about black people. On this, uh, certificate of occupancy, it was on the agenda last time and you decided to do something different with it. Uh, you got a church here that has a black pastor. You got a food establishment that are African owns, BLT. Uh, you've got Panther Hill Apartments that Africans own, black people, people of color own. And then you got Flowcam owned by white people. And you find it easy, although you say that you're very concerned about the safety and the well-being of the citizens of Prairie View, you allow a white company to operate fully without proper certification and inspection. But to black companies, you put a blanket, uh, uh, prohibi- prohibi- prohibition on them. And that may not have been your intent, but to a person from the outside looking in, that's the color it seems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Kevin Jackson.
To Mayor Allen, his absence, to the council of Prairie View, to counselor, Dr. Brown, all the citizens of Prairie View. My name is Reverend Kevin L. Jackson. I reside in San Antonio, Texas, where I'm a retiree right now. God has blessed me to do that at an early age. I'm associate pastor and assistant to the pastor at Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church in San Antonio. I'm a member of the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, Psi Alpha Chapter in San Antonio. Had opportunity to receive a number of distinguished awards and recognitions during my time in, in employment. But I stand before you this evening, not as a fraternity member, not as a pastor or preacher, not as an employee or retiree. What I stand before you today is as a parent. I had opportunity to work with thousands of kids in the state of Texas and around this country. But there is one child that concerns me most out of all of them. And that one child is my child. It was Ashley Nicole Jackson, who resides at the Panther Hill Apartments here in your city. I came this afternoon to speak with you as humbly as I know how, and as compassionately as I know how, and as professionally as I know how. But standing here before you is going to become an emotional issue as well. Simply because Ashley is a senior at Prairie View, who has had a pretty good career there and who's going to be graduating in the summer. We had high hopes of this being a very promising year. This is her senior year. Her moving into a new apartment complex here in your city. We were excited. Read the information that was distributed about the apartment complex and the property. And my wife and I, Michelle, were very confident in, um, the property itself and the way the year was going to go. And as I'm sure as all of you are aware, it has not gone as promised. It has not gone as promised. The amenities that were promised have not been delivered, most of them. She has been living in an unsafe environment, has contracted, contracted respiratory infections that has caused for her to have medical procedures, including surgery. And those are still ongoing and she's still having follow-up treatment as we speak. I am very concerned about that because this is not just a one-time issue. This is going to be an ongoing health issue. And so I speak to you on behalf of not just Ashley, but I know there are other students that have come that have spoken to you all. But I'm not sure if you've heard from any of the parents. I must say I'm very disappointed at the way this year has gone. I'm very disappointed in the way things have been approached, uh, basically by what I've seen from San Antonio, by the lack of communication on the part of the property and the part of, uh, particularly individuals, uh, from this council. We have not heard any type of information coming from the apartment complex, the construction company, or this council regarding things that are going to be done and how things can, uh, take place that would alleviate these type of things happening in the future. I must say, based upon the action or inaction that has taken place with regards to Panther Hill Apartments, I will not be in a position to recommend any of my friends, coworkers, fraternities, church members around the country that they send their children to this area until these things are taken care of. And procedures and policies are put in place to ensure that these type of things do not happen again. Dr. Brown has spoken before that you all have an issue that I noticed on number six, or number, uh, eight on your agenda, speaking of an occupancy, a temporary occupancy. To my understanding, there should be no certificates of occupancy, uh, issued at this time based upon the issues that are happening at Panther Hill Apartments. Don't know if that's accurate, but what I do say is, I ask you to please make this a priority. I took a visit over to the apartment complex this afternoon and all those things are looking well. They're looking like some improvements have been made, but there's still an open construction zone that anyone can go into. There's still contaminated water that is stored on the facility. There's still chemicals and paints that are out in the open. How do I know that? Because I was able to walk freely around the property without being questioned about who I was, where I was going, and what my business was. Now, I'm fifty-seven and know better. You would think an eighteen to twenty-five-year-old would know better. But what about if an eighteen to twenty-five-year-old who's a student at Prairie View that lives at Panther Hill has a six-year-old brother that's visiting and don't know any better, and they come in from Connecticut and wander into these areas? Then what? Then you're leaving yourself open to litigation. So I speak to you on behalf of not only my daughter Ashley and me and my wife, Michelle, and all the other parents, but I'm speaking to you to try to help you have forward thinking to keep these kinds of things from happening again and not expose yourself to opportunities for litigation. So if you don't want to do it for the children, if you don't want to do it for the parents, most certainly, I would think you would do it for the citizens of Prairie View. Nelson Mandela stated, "You can tell a lot by a nation on how they treat their children." I would like to expand that and stretch it and say you can tell a lot by a city, a lot by a school, by how they treat their students and how they treat their children. I thank you for allowing me to stand before you today, and I pray that some words have been said that will prompt you to continue your action with regards to the Panther Hill Apartments. Thank you.
Uh, next, we'll have a presentation for the proclamation for the Theta Chapter of Omega Psi Phi by council member, Jonathan Randall.
Uh, just for clarification, I would need to think the Chi chapter is the type of, on the, uh, agenda. But, uh, I would ask my attorney and my chapter干事to come forward, please. So if they come, I'm just going to read the proclamation. It says, "A proclamation and recognition of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated Theta Chi Chapter, Prairie View, Texas, on its sixty-fourth anniversary." Whereas Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated was founded at Howard University in Washington DC on November seventeenth, nineteen eleven, and has expanded to more than seven hundred and fifty chapters throughout the union in the world, including Prairie View, Texas, and Prairie Island University. Whereas the Theta Chi Chapter of Omega Psi Phi was chartered on February first, nineteen fifty-five, in Prairie View, Texas. And whereas the chapter is celebrating the sixty-fourth anniversary with tenacity and perseverance of the, of charter members, Dr. Erwin Martin, Dr. Avis Dunson, Danny Brooks, Archie Walker, Carl Weems, charter members of Theta Chi Chapter. And whereas, as required by the fraternal structure and its guideline, guiding principles of manhood, scholarship, perseverance, uplift, the commitment to developing the Prairie View community through the fraternity's mandated programs, Achievement Week, Scholarship, Social Action Programs, Talent Hunt Programs, Memorial Service, Reclamation and Retention, College Endowment Fund, Health Initiatives, Board Registration, Education, and Mobilization, and N W A C P, which is consequently uplift, fortify, educate our city, country, and nation. And whereas Theta Chi Chapter recognizes the demand for resolute programming initiatives, hands-on community engagement, and education for citizens to attain a certain quality of life and pedigree in the city of Prairie View, Texas. And whereas, brothers of Theta Chi Chapter are committed to the ideologies and model of fraternity. Friendship is essential to the soul, is evident, is evident in the brothers' involvement in the development of the city and the direct community love through activism, volunteerism, and community relations. And whereas Theta Chi Chapter since chartering has brought the esteemed recognition to the city of Prairie View by charting in the Road Theta Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated on the campus of Prairie Island University. Whereas the Clefthor brothers of Theta Chi Chapter respectively have provided leadership in the city in that large, in that large community, namely Ron Leverett, Jonathan Randall, Donald Sow, Michael Sow, Marion Henry, Henry Kemp, Na'Shawn Edwards, educators and business professionals, and therefore. Be it resolved that the city council, the city of Prairie View, meeting in regular session hereby proclaim February first as Theta Chi Chapter Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated Day in the city of Prairie View, and cause the signature of Mayor Allen to be a fit.
Could you go down there and get, so we can take a good picture of the good brother?
So I like what you do. A couple of my chapters, this is my chapter boss of this, for the Adam Frank.
Na'Shawn Edwards.
Ron Leverett, you're our single.
As you guys like to be out, you guys may see a way out the door.
Don't laugh, don't laugh, don't laugh.
That's funny.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
And I thank you guys for your service. It has been suggested by council that we move items four, six, nine, eleven, and twelve, uh, to the end of the agenda and go into executive session, uh, now, yeah. Motion, for if you guys are.
Mr. Mayor Proton.
Councilman Randall.
I move that we move items four, six, nine, eleven, and twelve to the end of the agenda to be, uh, heard in executive session.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any outrunners? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, I understand. Right. Any abstentions? Motion passed.
Um, Mister Mayor Proton. Uh, I move that we move, um, item eight forward or up in the agenda to after of the proclamation.
Second. You want to move it up to right now?
Yeah.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any outrunners? All those in favor of moving item eight, uh, to item agenda number one. Say aye.
Aye.
All those that oppose? Any abstentions? Motion is passed. Since this, uh, item number eight, uh, happens to be, my notion, I would like for Pastor Singleton to come up to give a, a brief background.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Pastor Singleton. I, um, I live in the community. We built a facility in Prairie View, Texas, to counteract some of the social ills in town. Uh, facility is about ten thousand square foot in size. Uh, we have, uh, four adult classrooms. We have bookstore. We have resource center, uh, cafeteria that seats about a hundred. Our goal is to provide services for the community, life skills, financial stewardship, a twelve-step drug program, and to mention other programs that the community needs. I'm a proponent, uh, uh, that government cannot do everything. Government needs partnership, Christian partnership, and, um, that's what we, um, attempted to do to be able to provide services again for the city. And so I think the city's going to be better with a church working in concert with the needs of the city. Some of those needs, as my fellow curdies has mentioned before, God holds us responsible for taking care of the, the, uh, those who are marginalized, those who don't have a voice, widows, um, children. And the Bible declares that when we take care of the poor, we're basically lending to God. And so, uh, I've built several projects before, and I think the city is flexible enough that if one person violates a procedure or a policy, everyone should not be held accountable for that, especially those who have followed the process properly. I think it's short-sighted. I think it's, um, it's not the best approach. And so some of those needs will continue. We serve a lot of students. Those students have spiritual needs. Those students have to be encouraged. Those students have to have a place to eat after church on Sunday. And those needs are not going to wait until we resolve this other deal, uh, with Panther Hill Apartments. I've built several million-dollar projects, and it is a typical thing when one person violates a building procedure, you red-tag that building or that project, and they should cease building. If they continue building, then the city can take further actions. That's how you mitigate damages. But I don't think we ought to do like Trump is doing. We shouldn't, uh, penalize federal workers, people, because one person, uh, has violated the procedure. And so I'm here again, councilman, councilperson. I'm here. We spent, um, we've invested a lot of money so that we can put our money where our mouth is at. So often, curdies do a whole lot of talking, and we do a whole lot of grandstanding. But we've put about a million dollars in this project, and this project is going to make the city better. And so that's what I'm here to do. And then we do a lot of research in the community. I think some of the issues that the community has cannot be dealt with on Sunday morning. You can't just give someone an inspirational speech on Sunday morning. You have to dig deep. Some of them are, sometimes people need training. They need to be educated. They need to be enlightened. They need additional services. And so that's what our church does. We don't, uh, simplify issues, pregnancy issues. We don't simplify poverty. We don't signify, simplify literacy. We provide programs for that. And so I just wanted the city council to know, we follow the rules. We follow the rules, and I believe that we should be allowed to do ministry. And I'll say this last thing. Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I, the Bible says that, um, when the righteous are in charge, the people rejoice. And this is the, the city council's opportunity to make a decision that may not be pleasant for everybody, but it's going to help those people who are disenfranchised already. They shouldn't have to suffer anymore so that we can do work of ministry. And I'm not political. I want to do the work of ministry. I, I've been called in this place. And so I don't really get into debate of Republican and Democrat, and I'm a Christian. And my faith causes me to make sacrifices and to see things according to the word of God and to separate my emotions from what is right and true. And so that's what we've tried to do, and we're ready to move forward. And according to, uh, the reports that I've given to the city council, they've recommended that we move forward. And I'd like to receive my certificate of occupancy tonight so we can have service on Wednesday and Sunday, and we can move forward. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Councilman Randall.
I just, um, I know we've had this conversation, so Bureau Veritas came to see you last.
They came again last Friday. Yes, sir.
Uh, can you just clarify to the council what occurred in that?
On that visit on last Friday, Bureau Veritas, um, passed everything, and they recommended a temporary certificate of occupancy. And the only reason they recommended a temporary certificate of occupancy because we have not completed our permanent parking. We've done crushed concrete. We've done several truckloads of crushed concrete. We cannot compact it yet because the weather's been so bad. And so they basically said there are no, uh, issues and no safety issues with our project. We have several million dollars worth of liability insurance. I brought those policies with me. So I'm not grandstanding again. We've six million dollars worth of insurance on everything you can imagine. And so we believe again that the needs of the city shouldn't have to wait while this other issue is being solved.
So first, I want to thank you Reverend Singleton for coming up here again. Um, I would kind of want to give clarification to this whole fiasco that has been happening for the last couple of meetings. Um, the reason why we're having, um, you know, we have you on the agenda. We have the BLT grill is because at this moment in time within the city, we want to see documentation from Bureau Veritas saying that it's passed. And right now, I know the notion's coming out like, oh, city council is trying to stop everything, try to halt, halt everything. Let me kind of give you the chronological time order. So it all started with the Panther Hill Apartments. Whenever it was getting constructed.
I, I know where you're going, but we need to stay on, on this, this item specifically. You know, we, we don't get into the point where we're talking about other stuff that's not this agenda that we're going to get into, into trouble as far as opening the act. So it's kind of cater, we need to cater our conversation just towards his specific item because that's what we're talking about.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll save this then. I'll save this then at least. Uh, I appreciate, I actually see the documentation, uh, that says they're approving for temporary CEO. And that's all we were looking for is the documentation approving because we just want to make sure that our, the policies and procedures, as Reverend Jackson made, you know, make sure they're followed in place. So, uh...
May I make a response, please?
Oh, yes, sir.
I, I, I think it would have been helpful because the city council does have a, a role to play in mitigating the damages of the city. But if it was decided on December twentieth to halt that, I think it would have been appropriate to send out communications to those other persons who had certificate of occupancies so we're not blindsided when we come up here. And my job is to influence people. And so when I tell our membership something and I come back and say something else, it could look like that I'm being untruthful, and it could really damage our congregation. So I don't dispute, uh, the actions that the city took with Panther Hill because I'm not aware of that. But I do think, in fairness to all those other persons, some communication should have been given. Some phone calls should have been made. You should have looked up on the, what the...
I've been seeing, sorry, because you're short.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, due to...
I'm so sorry.
I think you're about to get wet.
Yes, sir.
You came before, so, Councilman, uh, Randall.
Mister Mayor Proton, I move that we approve, um, the issuance of the six-month temporary certificate of occupancy for Victorious Believers Church located at two one one three one Pine Island Road.
Second.
It has been probably moved and seconded that, that we authorize the issuance of the six-month temporary certificate of occupancy for the Victorious Believers and Church located at two one one three one Pine Island. All those in favor say aye. I have outrunners.
Citizens in council, um, I, we knew we were going to come here. The issue on number eight, um, I, I've, uh, talked to Pastor Singleton. I went by his church before. It was even built. The issue that we're, what we're trying to do is we're doing a one-off. The notification that you were wanting was a directive that came for us that should have came from the mayor. We in December said that we're going to not issue any CEOs in the city of Prairie View until we had a plan to move forward. Everyone's coming up saying all this stuff, and there's still no plan before us. We don't, we shouldn't be coming every meeting having one-off CEOs that we're going to approve. All it simply takes is the mayor coming to us with the plan, saying this is who's going to do this, this is going to do this, and we move forward. So I don't want us to do, th- this is the first time we're going to actually make them to, to approve this. But then we're going to do this for all the other five, and we're going to get back to the same issue. So my unread, unreadiness is that we voted to not issue any CEOs. Is that taking everyone off? Are we going to do, continue to do one-offs moving forward?
Uh, so, uh, being that this is my agenda item, uh, me hearing the need of this and how it can be beneficial to our city in moving forward, we will have to, what we want is to see documentation. This documentation is checked off. We still have the, the hold on, on the community, on the, on the ci- city. But then that everything he has, we have asked for him to do, it has been checked off. I don't think that we should hold him hostage due to the fact of what Panther Hill is doing. Panther Hill, uh, we already, uh, said what we was going to do. We passed. We went on about it. I don't think it's fair to, if someone get everything checked off, and we are not reliable for, for anything to, to hold them.
The reality is, you know, I understand what you're saying, but in the last meeting, the...
But in the last meeting, the reason why the meeting went the way it was is because it was my understanding that we created the plan. The plan is to, I, the, the building inspector, the full-time building inspector, correct? But we have to be able to move the city forward while that plan, the plan is created. But now we have to let that part of the plan play itself out. So we have to get every CEO in front of us. The problem isn't giving CEOs. The problem has always been giving the adequate inspections for the CEOs. So if we have to have people come up here one at a time and bring the inspections for us to pass the CEO, then that's, we have, that way we, we're still allowing development to move forward while we're still, we're, we're countering a circumvented process at the same time. That's my perspective because now, Mr. Singleton, he, he brought his, his inspections. That's, we have, we see inspections for a whole lot of stuff. So if we can get inspections in front of us and we know for sure that we are taking care of our due diligence, then that's how we move, that's how we, you know, handle both ends of the spectrum at the same time. That's my, that's my perspective.
Hey, hey, council, is it possible that on a certificate that we put today's date and a six-month date so that way Mr. Singleton, Pastor Singleton can have a reminder to, that he basically in six months or before then to come back in front of council? So that way, or our building official hopefully in that time period could approve him for a certificate of occupancy?
Yeah, so technically the way your charter reads, because the mayor is currently still the building official, what you're doing as council is authorizing the issuance, meaning kind of a lift of the moratorium for this purpose only. So technically it still has to be issued by the mayor. You can put an end date on it of the six months from today's date and it'll be as soon as he signs it, in essence. So I, I don't know if he's coming later this evening or, but, but yes, you can put an end date on the six months.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, have the same rate? Motion passed.
Reverend Singleton, can you take my card? I appreciate the edification of, of what you feel we can do better with communication. So I like to be in contact with you so we don't allow that again.
Thank you so much. Thank you, City Council.
Discussing and say action on the approval of city council meeting minutes dated January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen?
I move that we approve the minutes, approve the city council meeting, meeting minutes dated January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any readiness? All those in favor? All those opposed, have the same rate? Motion passed.